Fourteenth twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting to order at seven P M. And we'll do the roll call. Steve Hicken in Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson White Oak Drive.
Jason McCarthy Planning and Zoning Administrator.
And Linda's.
Linda's excused.
Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Question. All favor.
Aye.
On opposed. Minutes from previous meeting of July twenty fourth twenty twenty four.
Move to approve prior minutes.
I'll second that one.
Question. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Of a comment. Anyone wishing to comment now on any agenda item? Do so, or if you want to wait till the public hearing, you can comment then also. Seeing no one, we will close all the comment and. Six A is a public hearing for Renovare Development LLC, Plan Unit Development, Plan Application Review within the development district. Apparent is Renovare Development LLC thirteen North Washington Street in Ypsilanti. Jason.
Thank you. We have both representatives, ladies from Renovare Development Incorporated, R A L C, excuse me, here tonight, along with our civil engineer Brian Selwannen. And we are pleased to, I guess, present to you the preliminary plan P U D for Renovare Development. This is on the township-owned five-acre parcel. Street from the old Township Hall. And if you remember, we zoned this property for the development from general business to development district, which allows a variety of mixed-use residential housing type. So this is a five-acre parcel. And I know that you guys have been working through preliminary P U D. We had our pre-conference, then we had them present the information that they had at the last meeting to you. And they have since revised those plans a little bit and added some more detail as required by the P U D process. And the objective tonight is to hopefully get to a final P U D pending any additional information that's still required through zoning ordinance. But as you can see, we are proposing, or they are proposing forty-seven dwelling units on the five acres. And that's exciting. These are workforce-level housing, so when you're looking at doctors, nurses, and policemen, firemen, teachers, and the like. That's the level of price points that I believe that we're going after, along with some financial assistance, perhaps with home buying. And they have a number of other mechanisms in play that they can discuss with you. So this is the overall general site plan. One of the things that the P U D language requires is that we don't exceed the density of the urban residential district, which the maximum density in the U R district is ten point eight nine dwelling units per acre. And forty-seven units spread out on this five acres equals nine point four. According to my math, anyway. So that passed that particular issue. This is their rating plan. Obviously, for the Planning Commission's information, you had some larger prints put into your packets. Utility plan, so there will be extending water and sewer on the site. And addressing stormwater involved. There's a little bit of sections and profiles there that's not very interesting, but this is. So these are some of the concepts that the team has put together as far as floor plans and elevations, of course, which are required at this stage of the planning, uh, unit development process. And they also did a very nice rendering. Like to put this on our TV out in front as to the final P U D. And obviously, if it gets approved, which we hope it will, this is pretty exciting for our community and for those people that would potentially live here. Of course, this is Michael's, and you have Goodwill, and then, of course, Starbucks for coffee. And then to the south of this property is the Aronor Heritage Trail. And our part property is Schwemburg Park, so that's a trailhead for any of the residents of our community or visitors to the community, but certainly in close proximity to this. Bit of a streetscape here. There is an elevation change going up into the site, which I think they'll continue to maintain. So these are some of the housing types. Duplex. Then multifamily. So tonight, where we're at in the P U D process is zoning administrator shall publish and send out public notices in the same manner as described in section sixteen oh four of this ordinance, which is just to say that we notified all property owners within three hundred feet of the property, and we advertised the public hearing in the newspaper, the Mining Journal. Following public notices, the Planning Commission shall hold a public hearing on the preliminary P U D plan for the purpose of receiving public comment on the P U D. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission shall review the preliminary P U D plan for conformance with the standards of thirteen oh seven and make its findings according to those standards and shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the preliminary P U D. So per thirteen oh seven, the Planning Commission will go through the following, which need to be satisfied. The P U D complies with all qualifying conditions of thirteen oh two. The P U D is compatible with the surrounding uses of land, the natural environment, and the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the development. The proposed uses, the P U D, uses within the P U D will not possess conditions or effects that would be interest to public health, safety, and welfare in the community. Consistent with the P U D as described in thirteen oh one, represents an opportunity for improved or innovative development for the community that cannot be achieved through conventional zoning. So this is that area of the P U D that allows us to kind of bend the ordinance when it comes to density or setbacks that improved or innovative development for the community that cannot be achieved through conventional zoning. So our, per our ordinance, let's say, in that particular zoning district. The proposed P U D meets all the site plan requirements in this article, provisions of Article eighteen, Site Plan Review, Section eighteen oh seven, respective of being either a preliminary or final P U D. Preliminary P U D must meet Section thirteen oh five, and final P U D must meet Section thirteen oh six. With that being said, there are some items, as you can imagine, there's a lot of moving parts with this development. And as such, there are some items that are still yet to be fleshed out. One would be the final stormwater plan. Parking table with all deviations for the development district requirements. Actually, I believe that was actually included on one of the sheets here. And then any other information as deemed necessary by the Planning Commission for you guys to be comfortable with the proposed development. So with that, I would ask Jim if he would like to open up the public hearing or if you would like to ask any of the Renovare Developments, Development Team to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Sure, I got a couple of questions. Could you bring this, this image of the overall image up again, Jason?
Is it?
Oh, went right past it. There it is, there it is. So as I'm looking at this image, this, this rendering, if we look to the far, the farthest point out where the multiple family units are with the parking lot in back, you have a generous amount of trees back there, between the trees, between the parking and the commercial buildings there at all. But if I look on your, your site plan, which is, I imagine, not just a theoretical picture or what it could look like kind of picture, you call for a six-foot-high wooden cedar fence here, and you have a lot more generous area between the building back here and the residential parcels right there. I see no proposed tree, tree lines in here at all that would meet our, difference between our zonings. The land use intensity differences for the amount of berms you have to put up, the trees you have to put up, the fences you have to put up. So I was wondering, that's, that's not correct, then, I would assume. Not even close, is that right?
Yeah, so like.
Yeah, please.
Barry Paul's an architect for the project. Yeah, these are, these are renderings, you know, they really are perfectly to scale. We're using aerial imaging and modeling that's available for it. So they're really just to give you a kind of a feel for it. Yeah, so, yeah, we always, we usually say right out there, these are, you know, these are for visualization only, and they're not, you have to refer to the actual plans. So you are correct, there, there are not trees there.
Right, but our, our zoning ordinance is quite specific on the buffer yards that have to be put in there. The number of trees, the fence, the widths.
I didn't think our use required separation from the commercial.
Residential and commercial, I believe it does, is that correct, Jason?
But for them, develop commercial next door, you'd, you'd provide the buffer to the residential, not vice versa.
No, it's either way. In our, in our ordinance.
Residential has to protect the commercial. That's, that's certainly not how I ever read it, but you correct me.
Yeah, we can discuss it, but as long as you comply with our ordinance. There's different degrees of the buffer yard types. And the, the narrower, the, excuse me, the buffer yard that's proposed, the more intense it is. So for instance, if you utilize, let's say it's a buffer yard of fifteen feet.
Right.
You could utilize a wooden screening fence and then plantings on the other side of that. So we can discuss that, and that's kind of where that fine line is between the preliminary P U D and the final P U D. Those details, I expect the Planning Commission to be supplied with at that point.
And the reason I ask is the site plan, that you show your pavement, I can't imagine you have much more than three or four feet between your pavement and the fence there. I mean, it's really, really close.
And that's an area.
It is close. I mean, but so, I mean, if you're talking about another fifteen feet, where, where do you go with that parking? And where do you go with the streets and where do you, you know what I'm saying there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in my opinion, and you guys can take it for what it's worth, but again, with the P U D, you're allowing some. What's the right word?
Latitude?
Latitude with requirements to, for setbacks and density. And perhaps a buffer yard could be a component of that.
Well, you know, I'd be concerned because we're looking at putting up residential here, and I don't think a lot of people want to look at the back of Starbucks, you know, with their dumpsters and stuff back there. So I, I think we should put that into consideration. We're not, we're not keeping the people from Starbucks looking at apartment buildings and stuff like that. We're, we're looking at the people that are living there, looking at that stuff. Because obviously, there, there was that consideration when they put, put those trees up there, which is literally on the other person's property line there. So, I mean, it's just, you know, I want to make sure that the people that, if we're going to go through with this, that those residential people have something that's going to protect them from looking at, I hate to say squalor, it's not squalor, but it's a completely different type of thing. It's not a residential, and if you're looking to attract people into a residential area, it should look residential, I would think.
Yeah, well, I can work with the team to address that in some way, because it is, it's the business end of those businesses, if you will.
Yeah.
And I think there's a way to soften that.
All right, as long as that's, as long as that's followed up on.
I haven't noted, thank you, Steve.
Well, Jason, let me ask you this, and, and the fellow commissioners. Is that concern expressed by Commissioner Hicken something that could be put in as a condition of any motion to approve tonight?
In my opinion, yes.
Yeah, and as far as the latitude goes, I, you know, I want to know what kind of latitude you're willing to forego. I mean, if, you know, it's pretty well cut and dried in our zoning ordinance, what those buffer yards should look like with the difference between that type of business, commercial stuff and residential. And in fact, the ones that are further to the west are single-family homes, which have even a lower land use intensity. So there should be greater buffer yards back there as well. So, you know, we can't, I'm not just talking about that, I'm talking about the entire stretch behind, you know, where Starbucks is and where Goodwill is, all that stuff. They all need a buffer yard there. And, and we're dealing with small parcels as it is, so as long as that's taken into consideration or else the ordinance is followed in regards to those requirements.
If, if that's framed as a condition of approval, what would be the appropriate language, would you suggest, Jason?
Oh, that the buffer yard's addressed in some capacity between the land.
And so it'd be the adequate buffer yards be addressed between the land uses to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission?
Sure.
Okay.
Why don't we just ask Barry what, what you think could be done with that? So we kind of know we're on the same page here.
Yeah, well, I guess, just, just looking at the arrangement we came up with here, is we basically put the higher-density housing up closer to the street, closer to that sort of, you know, the back of the Goodwill and the auto repair place there. And then as, as we, as we come up and make the turn, and also, that is quite a rise, too. There's quite a bit of topography on the site overall. So then we sort of segregate into the single-family neighborhood. So we're trying to create more of the neighborhood up on the, the center and the west half of the site. And then, you know, that, that more urban living is down on that east end of the site. And that's what's relating to the Starbucks and that area. You know, certainly, we could, we could squeeze the front yards down on the townhouse, we could get a little more buffer there. You know, you know, perhaps as we close off that access through, you know, we can get the Goodwill people to cooperate, let us plant some stuff on their properties. I mean, I think there's a ways to approach this. You know, as we get down on the west end of the site, you know, there is a little vegetation growing on, on behind the Michael's area there. And, and we could, we could do, we could certainly work that out, you know, to get the planted buffer. But, but, yeah, I, I always read, read that the commercial had to block itself from the residential, but residential didn't have.
I think that would be if it's new commercial development. You can't force an existing commercial for people to put that up. So it's, it's the onus of the residential to make that offer.
Well, and as you point out, it's, it's nicer for the residential, sure.
Jason, are they required to put any fire hydrants in that area?
Um, that's a good question. The fire department hasn't indicated that yet, but I can certainly check on, on that.
We have two new ones in the development, and they meet the four hundred and fifty-foot radius requirement. So, yeah, they'll be adequate fire.
Probably why they didn't have a comment on it.
Jason, last meeting, we talked about that access road. You don't see any concerns like shutting that off and not allowing those commercial business that access road anymore? Because they've been using it for over ten years?
Yeah, I don't think it's super highly used. And again, that was something that the township did as a, for a benefit for those businesses. Because it's almost like, you know, when a private road, it's not supposed to touch more than three properties before it has to be brought up to like a county spec. Well, that private drive going into Starbucks, Michael's, what was, you know, the import place and Goodwill. I mean, that's a lot of traffic happening there. But when it was developed, it wasn't required to have an additional ingress egress. The township put that in on her own dime, maintained it on her own dime. And I believe throughout our conversations with this, that it wasn't going to be something that would hold up the development. And that's kind of the, you know, the, the message that I've been sending to the development team is that we could afford to lose that based on the quality of what they're bringing to the table. And I think that's something that the Planning Commission needs to consider.
There hasn't been any, like, true traffic study to know.
No, we've never had counters out there. I don't think a lot of people know about it.
A lot of people know about it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I always see eight or nine cars stacked up coming out of there. Not, not from that side, but on the north side.
Why would not having that there is more beneficial to the people that are going to be living there?
Oh, I agree. It's either one or the other.
And, and keep in mind, you know, the, the development team has put a lot of thought and effort into, and so has the Planning Commission, and your comments back them, and how they can maximize this development for the benefit of the community, too. I mean, forty-seven dwelling units on five acres is, is, is pretty impressive. With a variety of price points in the exact, if you look at the overall picture of what the township wanted to do when conveying this property to Renovare Development, that was a big component of it was, you know, let's get the maximum amount of affordable housing that we can get on the site.
Yeah, the, the other concern I have, I think maybe Mr. Savalainen could address this, is the cul-de-sac that you have there. I would be incredibly concerned with snow plowing going around that cul-de-sac, because they're going to always wing it to the outside of that cul-de-sac. And it looks like your, your front porch is literally a foot and a half off that. I mean, how are you going to prevent people just getting inundated with snow when that plow goes around there?
Yeah, it's, it's further than five feet off there, but it's.
Is it? What's, what's your scale? Because I'm looking at this, it looks like it's awful darn close. It looks like literally the sidewalk and then the porch starts on those homes on that cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I think it's a twenty scale or a thirty scale drawing you're looking at there.
Okay.
I don't have that in front of me.
I mean, you've got, you've got a twenty-four foot wide, and obviously, you can't wing it to the center, that would be, that would just.
No, you can't really put it in the center, but the intent of it is, you know, and we can look at trying to set those buildings back a little bit more. But in discussions that we've had, this is with, with the density we're looking at, this is meant to be more of a typical older-style, high-density housing area where the snowplow is basically going to be putting the snow up on the sidewalks. You're not going to, like, at my house in Nigani, where, where I live right now, we have sidewalks, but the snow goes on the sidewalks.
Right, but the sidewalk, it's literally the porch and then the sidewalk, so, I mean, I mean.
I mean, there is a little more.
And given the amount of snow we get up here, I think that's, 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 that'd be a tough sell for me.
Yeah, well, it's something that we can consider in the final layout, because that's going to affect some of the buffering and stuff, too, and how far we can move those buildings back. But, but that's kind of the, the intent there is it's, the individual property owners are going to be responsible for their driveways and whatever, just like, you know, you would in a standard neighborhood, you know. And then if you get into a heavy winter, just like a city would do where you, you got the snowbanks out there and haul it away.
I understand, but I don't know, I don't know anywhere in a city where homes are that close to the street.
Yeah, no, it's.
Are there?
No, it's, it's pretty rare, but you can find instances in, in a lot of communities like.
In Marquette?
Yeah, I, I would say, and probably even in some of the tighter areas of Trowbridge and that, where, you know, those streets in some cases are only eighteen feet, you know, and it's, we have twenty-six feet of snow. So you start losing a little bit when you do have a, a heavy winter.
But you also have to consider that we have municipal snow removal, you're going to have a private contractor in there.
That's, yeah, that's private.
Right, so I mean, that's part of it, too, when, when, when the municipality senses that there's an issue, they get in there and clear it up fast.
Yeah, if that's a condition, you know, we can look at it and see if you want to look for us to do a bigger setback. I mean, that's something that we can look at doing there. I think the dimensional architectural plan is a little clearer on the, the, has the actual dimensions and, and that information on. Also, it might be a little easier to see what you're looking at. I think that's sheet A one.
Yes, one zero.
But if you have some recommendations for that, I guess that's where.
No, I don't have recommendations, I mean, that, that would be your responsibility.
I mean, obviously.
My job is to, you know, notice, notice issues that might be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, and we're looking at how much area we have to work with. And, and that's what we're left with in the, in the best configuration that we could come up with at that time to fit that, you know, so.
I have other questions. Yes, so, Mr. Savalainen.
You want me to go to the podium and then?
Oh, if you want.
Just to make it clear.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right, thank you.
Sorry about that, I should have did that right away.
That's okay. So this, this plan here shows a, a retention pond at this end, correct?
Yes, we actually have two, three different retention ponds on the site.
You're going to have three?
Yep. If I can go to the, the board.
Yeah, sure, I, I, I can't see it on here, but maybe I just missed it, go ahead.
This, the, the way the grade works out, we have, we have about a five percent grade coming up to get to the. This is a little, this is about a percent and a half, you know, less than two even on the upper part. So on the, the green you see here, we have a, we have a set of basins here that take this half of the flow and direct it behind the, the lower part of the development. We have about sixty feet of space in here. So this is underground to a point. These contours here are actually a long, shallow detention basin.
Is that like a swale, or?
Yeah, it's like a swale, but it's, but it's settled in so water can perk into the ground.
Okay.
And that's, you know, it covers the back of like three of those, it's like a hundred and fifty feet long. So it's a nice, slow area to allow a lot of perk in a natural basin.
So that's, that's the second one.
That pretty much handles this flow. This flow then, we have a system collecting up there. And this stuff comes down the curb, and it goes into this drainage system, which goes to a larger, more conventional detention basin.
That's, that's this one you've shown on, on here, right?
Yeah, that's in the clear vision area.
Yeah.
Right there.
And where's the third one then?
And then the third one is the township actually put one on the site initially because they used to use it as like a, a dump area and a collection area. And that one is, is a pretty decent-sized basin. We don't even use it in our calks for what we need, but we overflow into that. And then it goes in to the storm system.
Okay.
Which is actually also part of the drainage district. So with it being part of the drainage district, the drainage district is designed for full development. Technically doesn't require storm detention on site. But yet, we're doing that, you know, on this, and we're going through with the, the part of the stormwater plan that's not complete is you have a pretty substantial requirement for an easement agreement. And that'll need to be between the, the community owners, whether it's the homeowners group or, or how the legal documents are set up for the site condominium. You know, so that really can't be signed until that's established, you know.
But all of this, what, in terms of the detention ponds and the drainage are part of what will eventually be required by the stormwater management?
Yeah, this stuff, like, I've put a few of these together just, just even recently. These actually, the, the plans get put right into that with where the basins are. The final calks at a hundred years.
Okay.
Fifty, all of that stuff.
All right, so.
Yeah, we've tried to keep it, you know, in areas that the natural terrain kind of accepts it.
Right.
You know, makes a part of it. In a way, like, using a longer basin rather than doing a deep hole full of water.
Right.
You know, you try and spread that out so that.
Sure.
You're only seeing water in there, you get a nasty storm, you know, you might see it sitting in there for a day. But typically, you know, those things will breed up.
Okay. So if it's part of the stormwater management plan, then how does a stormwater management plan define stormwater? Is snow considered stormwater?
No, you, it's, there's, and each community has started changing this a little bit. There's national standards on rainfall data, which are maximum rainfall during a major event in a year. And those things change a lot, like, Marquette changed a little bit from the flood that happened years ago when the, the dam job broke.
Yeah.
You know, Holden just changed theirs recently because of the, they had a nasty five-hundred-year storm wiped out a bunch of streets.
Now, when you say they, is that the county that regulates that, or is that the township?
Necessities can, it depends on how your, your setup, you know, in your community with, but.
So then it's.
Local government has the right. Local government has the right to adopt different stormwater.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm getting at here, there's been, Mr. Hagen and Commissioner Hagen and addressed the snow removal issue. Commissioner Cody at the first work session that Runavari presented by Zoom, and then at our last meeting, addressed the question of what is going to be the dollar amount of the homeowners' association fee, and will that be affordable for people who are trying to, who are presumably going to want affordable housing? And one of the issues was talked about the last meeting was, okay, snow, where is it going to be, who's going to remove it? They're going to have to have a private company come in. How's that going to add to the homeowners' association fee?
Yeah, I understand.
So, what I'm getting at here is, for one of these basins, these detention basins, could it be engineered and designed, and I guess this is for Mr. Posen as well, could it be designed in such a way to have a large opening off of the street into the basin so that a plow could come up there and, you know, get that into the-
It's a real, I'll give you a kind of-
Is that-
Quickie answer on that, because yes, we can. I mean, we could put this a little closer here, have it as that, but your ordinance doesn't allow us to store our snow storage in those areas.
Wow.
Yeah, and it's, you get them kind of close, you know, where it's going to drain into that, because that's ideally where you're going.
Yeah.
And one more thing about, like, you see your big snowbanks and everything, and it's like, holy cow, that's a lot of water. One thing, most snow, especially in the U.P., actually goes through a process called sublimation, which is the way that the snow actually takes the, the snow itself straight from a melt to like a vapor. It's kind of a weird thing. It'd be, I remember being at school, I mean, this is a great study for grad school.
It evaporates, is what you say.
Yeah, before getting in. It's when you have, when you have a rainfall on top of a wet snow, that's when it's bad. That's when it's, you know, tough to handle, but there's really, no one's been able to develop snow-related, heavy-duty waterfall, things like that. It's typically considered, you know, heavy rain events that have been, and that's a, that's a worldwide national standard, everything. It's not like just the U.P. or Marquette.
So, from an engineering standpoint, what you're saying is there's nothing really that can be engineered to assist in onsite storage and melting of the snow?
No, I don't, no. Like, these front yards have plenty of space up near. We have like twenty-five or thirty feet to the front doors of these, but as you mentioned here, these are pretty tight. We have some play back in this area to slide these back, but these couple-aged ones are probably the tighter ones that would be there, but it's really the homeowners out throwing the snow where they want to, you know, just like a lot of us have to do at home in the winter in the U.P., so.
Is the, just forget about snow, how about rainfall? What is the volume for your detention ponds based on? What kind of?
I've got these based on containing a hundred-year flow, a hundred-year storm event.
Okay.
Which is a twenty-four-hour duration, and that means it's, it's the worst storm you get over a twenty-four-hour period, and then you take into account how much is perky and what your maximum heights are before you get to an overflow. Your requirement is, in your own areas, fifty-year storm, and then you can release so much into your storm system, the way that goes, but typically, and this has been the way I've done it for the last four or five times I've been here, is it's, to go from that fifty to a hundred, it makes more sense to go to that hundred, and you do get, you hear of five-hundred-year storms, and that happens actually every year. It's just not twenty-four hours long. It happens in a two-hour period, and it overwhelms the cities, like Marquette, storm mammals were popping this summer at one point. That wasn't a hundred-year storm technically, but it was probably a five-hundred-year storm over two hours.
So, are you confident, based on this design, that at least for the foreseeable future, say, five years, this is going to be adequate to address stormwater?
I think it's a great system. I mean, it's, there's a lot of, even though it's a lot of tight spaces in the, in the development itself, the amount of green area and spaces along the runs of the stormwater are nice and long, and that's, the longer you can stretch that flow out before it gets into the municipal system, the better you are.
How many catch bases are you going to have in there?
Um, right now, we have two on top, two on the bottom, and there's about three in the back that add it. At times, we've added, we've gone with double basins in key areas in case you have a lot of, if you're getting a lot of sediment and stuff off the roads where you've got heavy sanding and things like that, where sometimes the grades get plugged, then you want to have a backup. But like, where I'm catching in the first area, like I said, it's only a one-and-a-half percent grade. The cross slope on a normal city street is two percent to three percent, which is actually steeper this way than it is, you know, longitudinally wise, so the amount of flow that's getting up into the gutter area and stuff isn't like bypassing those basins. If we had our basins on a five percent slope, they'd be closer together, trying to intercept that quicker. But, you know, we've worked, a lot of, you know, we'll typically be working out the final details with your engineering department and whoever they're having to review it. So, sometimes we'll add a basin or not after we go through those points, so.
Who does that, Jason, for us?
Lately, it's been O.H.M.
Yeah, we just went over one with O.H.M. just two weeks ago, and so we've been on the same page with, I've done probably thirty or forty stormwater plants since nineteen ninety-one at work at Township. I had a pretty good feel for it.
Thank you.
I just had a question on how the public will qualify for one of these workforce funds.
It's something that we can set up as part of the process, and we have all different processes depending on our partnerships with the municipalities. For instance, in Ypsilanti, we actually have a direct partnership with the city and the county, and we are doing a lottery system. So, what we do is we're giving a ninety-day preliminary opportunity for people to get pre-qualified, get their income, because we do have to certify incomes depending on the incentives that we bring in.
What is your target for EMI?
Right now, we have, it has not changed from our preliminary meeting when we talked about targets, which is sixty to one-twenty percent area median income. Part of that here, a lot of, we have to bring a lot of these tools to the U.P. because they don't exist, you know, so we are working with down payment assistance and lenders. We are able to bring some national lenders, lenders like Huntington here that are going to bring those tools and resources. What, you know, what we generally do, you know, for instance, with the municipals who want to participate, we host public meetings. We host public meetings where people can come in to learn preliminary before the houses come available, how they would qualify, how they become income certified. We would have participating lenders that would have different access to tools and portfolio, and then we would move into either preliminary reservation. For instance, in some communities, we're doing, we do lotteries in advance, so there is a lot of different opportunities for us to discuss what we think is best for the community, especially if we're targeting teachers or first responders or specific workforce companies.
Well, the EMI, it's been sixty to a hundred and twenty percent, and if our teachers or nurses make more than a hundred and twenty percent?
We'll have market rate available as well.
Okay.
And in this right now, just all of these units really are at, you know, or below the cost of construction. That's the big, the key, including, you know, having attainable market rate, so we will have price points for everyone.
Shannon, you mentioned last time, you know, maybe you should identify yourself for the record.
Absolutely. I apologize. I'm sorry I didn't ask.
I am so sorry. I am Shannon Morgan. I am managing partner of Runavari.
I think the, one of the questions that came up at one of our meetings was the issue of deed restrictions in terms of people buying these homes who need affordable housing and then having some restriction on them so they just don't flip it and sell it for a market rate a year later, two years later, or whatever, and I think that when you were here for the work session, you mentioned something about a deed restriction on a second note that has to be repaid and that the M.S.H.D.A. has criteria of five-years requirement and that the township, our township would have discretion to work with you to set whatever time limit we have. I don't want to reiterate all of that or go over all that again unless people have questions, but when will that negotiation or determination be made? What point? After the, after the homes are built and you're ready to roll out, you know, the lottery or whatever?
So, our goal right now, number one, first and foremost, is that we will need to be pursuing grant financing in order to make this development work. We're already meeting with MISHDA, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. In order to seek that financing from a, from a development standpoint, there will be requirements for deed covenants to ensure affordability. Beyond that, there's a lot of different moving pieces. When we start to talk about down payment assistance and others, oftentimes there's what we call second mortgages or notes, once again, to ensure affordability. The community as a stakeholder, you know, if they're giving any additional pieces, can set those preliminary pieces as well. So, we may have overlap on multiple pieces, but generally, in For Sale, and it depends how many incentives and what they are, the minimum criteria is five years, and sometimes there's a repayment. There is a requirement to keep the affordability during any resale because of the investment that's going in moving forward. That is, first and foremost, those are all going to be requirements depending on who participates, both in providing either down payment assistance or on the lending side as we're seeking incentives, but we can continue to have conversations with the township if we feel that we want to put together additional requirements to ensure affordability.
Okay, so, just to recapitulate what you said, MISHDA sets a five-year-
Any source that we're usually getting financial contribution towards the buyer or towards the unit or towards the development is going to have different requirements for deed restrictions. As we said right now, one of the sources we talked about, when we talk about missing middle or we talk about the My Neighborhood Grant in MISHDA in For Sale, it's a minimum of a five-year requirement. They have a specific covenant that we would provide to you as a template so you could review, but as we said, there may be additional sources. We're going to seek as many sources as we think is valuable to this community to bring in. We can provide you with some of those templates, as you, so you can review them.
But in terms of when we would have to be concerned about anything other than, we know now if there's a five-year requirement based on MISHDA, but anything else that we have to participate in, do we have to worry about that now, or do we wait until you-
I mean, ultimately, it's our goal to seek the, you know, once we get through full site plan and we're moving into development, moving beyond pre-development into the development stages and closings, as we get through this initiative, our goal would be to start to secure the financing sources, but even beyond that, start to meet with your local employers and different lenders that want to participate, to put as much of that together in advance so we can put the homebuyer package together prior to sale. So, you know, once we move through preliminary approvals and through pre-development and full site plan approval, we start to put all of those pieces together as quickly as possible, you know, once again, because as we get through site plan approval, we'll go through a comprehensive process to put together the HOA in our Exhibit Bs, and this is a comprehensive homeowners' association. We have a condominium, a site condominium, that will have a shared use agreement between the properties, once again, trying to keep the costs as affordable as they can be with reserves and require, and insurances that are required to fund those mechanisms. But it's our goal to anticipate as much of this as possible prior to finalizing all of that and moving into sale and actually breaking ground.
So, and you mentioned the homeowners' association, so in terms of one of the things we talked about, who's going to pay for snow removal, and is it going to be a burden on people who are moving there because they need affordable housing, isn't it? So, would this be like a traditional homeowners' association where the stated value of the property requires a higher percentage of participation in homeowners' fees? Well, condo, I was living in Chicago, based on the number, based on the size of your unit, that the bigger units, like you have the, some three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-dollar units, they, would they be assessed a higher percentage?
No. We actually have a more comprehensive massive master condominium that will be site condo, so your traditional single, even with the duplexes and cottages, those will be site condo. Those will be limited to administrative reserves and insurance, and obviously, you're going to own your own home. It's going to be a yearly fee that we will try to minimize as much as we can without the mandatory reserves that have to be in place and ever-moving insurance right now that will be required. The condominiums will be a monthly fee. That's why we're offering two different structures.
Okay, so there's going to be two fees?
There'll be two fees.
There's a monthly homeowners' fee, and then there's going to be a yearly fee. What's that going to be?
There's a condominium, there's a condominium. That will be monthly. Those are for people who, you know, do not want the exterior maintenance. The remaining units will be in a single-family structure in a site condo. And then all of the elements and green spaces will have a limited common, common space with a shared use agreement between the two, so think of it as its own kind of mini master plan.
So, your sixplexes and eightplexes, they would have a homeowners' association fee?
Correct.
But the single-family dwelling would not?
It would have a yearly, as we still have to carry insurance and the basics, but it would be, it would have a yearly fee.
And would that be equal to, or?
It would be prorated in the units, you know, once we finalize the budget, but generally, you know, once again, as we get through kind of the structures of the public, the public spaces, the limited common areas and the common areas, when you look at site condo, your typical budget is basic administrative and accounting fees. Right now, we have no clubhouse. We know, you know, common areas would be within the condominium, so it's really just your insurance and you have a required reserve that's set there.
So, just to, just to address in the simplest way you can, this concern about who's going to pay for the snow removal, and is it going to be a burden on the people who are the lower-income people in this group? What's your answer to that?
Do we pry those trees in here? So, the way this is written, access road is private.
I mean, so, it would be obviously shared, shared expenses, once again, prorated on the road removal, but snow removal is going to be, other than the roads, right, is going to be the burden of the single-family units, yeah. Yep, that will be prorated into a fee accordingly, and it will be split between each units, each condo association.
We typically, we typically carve out the roads in the site condo and dedicate them back to the public municipality in order to maximize affordability, but I don't know if that, that's an option here, so it will, it will modify the affordability of the units if those single-family homes are- if those single-family homes are contributing to road maintenance and snow removal. It is going to change the affordability.
Yeah, and, and the parking lots and the road maintenance? That would all be part of the homeowners association as well because roads, roads up here get pounded brutally.
Yes.
Okay, so then that's, so since they're not municipal at all, all that's going to be, have to be a burden of the condominium owners or the, or the site condo owners.
Yeah, so we're, what we'll do is we'll back into the condo fee based on the budget for the maintenance and insurance and all the other items that Shannon mentioned and figure out what that means from an affordable mortgage standpoint or the price point that we're, or the income targeting that we're looking at. Say we're looking at 80% AMI or 120% AMI. We'll figure out what that budget, say that budget is 200 a month, whatever it is. We will use that to factor in what an affordable mortgage is for a person that's making 80% AMI and then we will backfill the rest of the sales price with down payment assistance.
Okay.
So, we're building affordability in, based on the unique circumstances of the community and layering in down payment in order to make it work.
So, Jill, the last time you were here, you gave us some, what your current programming was for affordability. And I'll just read it real quickly and you can tell me if anything's changed. So, it's, it talks about three two-bed cottage units, 964 square feet, sales price at 224,500, 224,500. Ten two-bed cottage units, 960 square feet, same, 224,500. Three cottage units, 964 square feet, at 249,000. Eight three-bed cottage units, at 340,000. Ten two-bed duplex units at 280. And 14 two-bed townhouse units at 240. I can, I can show you. Just tell me if any of this has really changed radically or materially.
So, the 224 price point is a price max that was set by MISHDA. And so, that price point was assigned to the MISHDA units, but that's changing. MISHDA's guy, MISHDA is removing that lower price restriction. And it's always our policy that we like to see units of a similar product type priced the same in the community so it's not obvious that, you know, something is lower income or something like that, right? So, if we can move those 224s up to the 240 price point, that's what we'd like to do. We're waiting for more guidance from MISHDA, but.
The 224 go to the 249?
240. But this is a little, we've moved these around a little bit and I'd be happy to kind of update this for you in a minute.
Yes, please. Would you do that? You can send it to all of us.
In general, yeah. So, all of the cottages and the duplexes are two beds, except for the eight three-bed cottages. And then all the towns are two beds. All of the two-bed cottages and the duplexes are 240. All the towns are 240. And the three-bedroom cottages are closer to 350. And we're constantly updating our market information with our local Realtor, Stephanie Jones.
Sure, sure. Okay.
I'd say I've changed a little bit.
But a little bit, but not?
Not too much.
Substantially. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to add from your team?
Well, the only thing I'd like to say is that, you know, the overall affordability for the project, yes, it's going to be driven by some of the financing sources that come in, but it's really driven through our purchase agreement with the township. And so, I think one of the things that we need to do is sit down with the township and talk about length and duration of affordability to make sure that we've accommodated the township's goals in the site condominium documents. Of course, that has to consider any specific MISHDA financing for the 13 units that are MISHDA financed or anything like that. But it's really, what are the long-term goals of the township? Because that, it's in our option that a majority of these units be targeted to 80 to 120. So, those are some items that we have to work through with the township board and with Jason on exactly how, what are we, are we talking about in perpetuity or, or what that looks like? But that's all done through the site, the condominium document process.
Right, but you, you have the five-year MISHDA that it locks in the saleability of these.
But that's only on the MISHDA units.
Only on 13.
Only on 13.
That's right.
Okay.
Right, right, right.
Okay, well, the 13, okay.
As we start that, we're starting that process right now with accounting that will also drive some affordability requirements, but just want to stay in close lockstep with the township on all these different requirements that are coming in from the financing and then really making sure that the township's goals are being met.
Who do you negotiate with when you say the township? Do you negotiate with Jason at the Planning Commission? Do you negotiate with Lynn Durant? Who do you, who do you negotiate with?
I think we would start with Jason as the liaison, but all of this has to happen at the board level.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Do you have any written correspondence?
We did have some written correspondence from Jesse and I, who I believe is here tonight. I'll read that into the record. Hi, Eric and Jason. Wanted to reach out to you regarding the notice of the public hearing schedule for this evening and want to go on record that we are in favor of the development activities by, planned by Run of R.A. Development. Also want to reiterate that our desire is to continue to grow our business here in the township, which will inevitably include a building expansion. To meet with you and/or Jason regarding this and any potential zoning implications. Could you please propose a date and time for Mark and I that we can stop by for a meeting? Lastly, I'm thinking it might be a good idea to come to the meeting tonight to learn more about the, what is being developed across the street. Do you think there's a benefit of attending this meeting and void, this meeting to voice support as well? And I responded back that, yes.
It's the only one? All right. Then we can open the public hearing at 7:57. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward now.
Hey, guys. My name is Christopher Germain. I'm the Chief Executive Officer at the Lake Spear Community Partnership. It's good to see you all again. Let's talk about a different housing development. I want to start off tonight by reiterating that the LSCP has been heavily involved in housing all across the county. Many of you have probably seen the target market analysis that was released earlier this year. This type of development that Shannon and Jill are proposing is exactly what the target market analysis calls for. So, the TMA says that we have a demand for 980 new units of owner-occupied housing in the entire county every single year for the next five years. Of that, 470 of those are owner-occupied and 115 of those are this type of development, higher-density townhomes next to each other. But what I think is most important is actually that the, the cost data shows that the majority of that need is below $350,000 for a purchase price, which are the numbers that you're talking about tonight. And they're numbers that are incredibly elusive in other parts of the county and other parts of the state. So, while you're paying significant attention to the site plan as a urban planner by trade and as a former planning commissioner, I can really respect that. I really do encourage you to be considering the larger-scale picture here that no housing development is perfect for. You want to make it as close to perfect as you possibly can. But you have a real gem here, a real opportunity to make an impact, not only in the township, but across the entire county. Because while those numbers are countywide, a lot of development is really likely to be focused here in Marquette Township, which is why you have such a carefully-planned community and you're paying so much detail. So, I genuinely appreciate that. I also think it's really important to notice when we talk about AMI numbers and talk 60%, 80%, 100%, 120%, those numbers go really all over the place. And just to give you some factors, up to 120% for a family of four people is $104,000, right? Those are folks who still can't afford housing, even at the current market rates. So, it's a nurse whose spouse doesn't work or a police officer or a firefighter or someone who works full-time and only part-time and has two kids. I mean, these are the folks who can't afford housing and it's impacting our businesses all across the county. So, we really appreciate your consideration of this project. We're in full support of it at the LSCP and it fits really well into the TMA and we appreciate this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Lynn Durant, 265 Bishop Woods Road. I'm just not real clear on a few things. When you're talking about the snow plowing, that's my main concern. If you imagine a plow truck private, I'm guessing because of the association and it not being a county road, going down the middle and trying to make that turn. And then maybe, because I don't know the width exactly of how the truck, you know, how big the truck will be versus how many, how wide the road is. So, you go down the middle, go around the circle. Where do you put it? Okay, where does it end up? So, then you go around again, I'm guessing, and maybe like on the right side. Push it in the yards all the way around. That might work because it's going off the road. Then maybe do the same thing on the inside. Push it on. I'm not real sure. I, I can't envision how this is going to play out with no place to put it. I mean, when we had the hotel, we were able to push it back and at some point, we had to take it out of there and move it to the back. And at another point, we had to take it out of the back and move it probably over by the mall. So, there is, you know, there's more space there that you're talking about that was open, that allowed snow. But this is going to be more concentrated, all right? So, whether you have an association or people have their own means of moving the snow from their front porch, you know, as Steve said, that means they need a snow blower, okay? There's no garages, I don't think, at least on the majority. If, if there's parking in the front, they have two trash cans. They have a lawnmower, tools for trimming. I mean, it depends on maybe what the association does, how much they do, depending on, you know, how much that can be afforded. If the brushes, the bushes are trimmed, the backyards. I mean, I could see almost the association maybe doing the front of the grass and stuff. What happens to the backyards? I guess those are my main concerns. Trash pickup is probably not going to be too bad, but it seems like it's really close to the road. The whole idea with North Country with the new trash receptacles is that a truck will come through and just pick the red one up or the blue one up and dump it. It'll be a one-person truck and they'll just reach out and grab it. So, because this is kind of confined, I kind of have concerns about that. And in the scheme of things, you know, I think the biggest concern is the financing part and who can afford this and how much paperwork is involved and how many participants you have with banks or businesses contributing to that missing middle or that down payment assistance. That's probably the bigger concern. But you also have to think of the logistics of this. That's kind of your job, or it is your job, to look at the stormwater and stuff. And I was curious as if we're going to have three water retention options or, you know, put in the plan. Since the one is already in there that the township put in, if that second one maybe space could be used for snow. Not really storage, but it's got to go somewhere and there's lots. And if you really look at the plan, it's so tight. I mean, you can't even dump it at the end. So, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? There's no one else wishing to speak? Oh, is the public hearing at the O4? Yours?
Yeah, I have one question. Is there any play areas for children? I mean, I assume there's going to be a plan to have children in there. Where do they go to play?
We tried to limit the cost to the HOA. So, those are all fees that increase insurance, increase costs.
So, just run the streets, baby?
Or the park next door.
The park next door? Sure, why not?
Just one comment. Jason, I know that, as you rightly pointed out very beginning, there are many moving parts and types of things. But, and I don't view this as an impediment to taking action on this tonight. But I believe that either in our ordinance or our stormwater management ordinance, the stormwater management, there is a requirement that at the preliminary PUD approval, the, the, the planning commission is supposed to have a copy of the stormwater management plan. And I know we've waived that requirement unofficially in the past. But I guess, when, when would you anticipate, and maybe Mr. Savalainen would know too, when would we anticipate having a complete stormwater management plan?
I suspect by the submission of the final PUD.
Which would be approximately, in your opinion, what would that be?
Yeah, typically, the way it's been going is they have their outside consultant do the review on the stormwater. That's all handled and those final PUD improvements and that's when that's been done.
By now, when is that? From today's date, when you're looking?
Well, to whenever that, that final PUD meeting is going to be held and when the reviews are done, you know, completely. Because there hasn't been like a stormwater response or anything that I've seen, you know, for us to communicate with those. But I can't, you know, answer those things.
You've submitted a stormwater plan?
This is the stormwater plan.
This is the stormwater plan?
Yeah.
But you're waiting.
This is the stormwater plan?
Oh, yeah. I mean, the basins are all on there.
You got elevations on all that stuff?
Yeah, there's profile sheets of this.
We don't have any of that stuff then.
Page C something.
Okay, okay.
But it's, it's not any different than anything that.
I guess, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm just pointing out is if we're not going to have observed this requirement of our ordinance, then maybe we should take it out of the ordinance because we're supposed to have a copy of that.
With all due respect to the planning commission, they did submit a stormwater plan, okay? There's not been a plan that's been submitted to the township that's went to OHM that hasn't came back and needed some tweaking to comply with our ordinance. So, it's, it's a fluid situation. Our goal is to gain compliance with our ordinance, which Mr. Savalainen has successfully done over and over again, in, in my opinion, since I've been working here in the township. So, I appreciate your sensitivity to the stormwater subject, but it is a, one component of a very large development.
Right.
That will be implied with.
I, I am in favor of this development.
We can get you all the calcs and you can review all that.
I don't think that's what Mr., Mr., he's not asking. I think he's saying that since our ordinance says you must have this, 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 and this when you submit your preliminary PUD plan and we're saying, forget that part. Why is it even in our ordinance? And I think that was a question that he asked.
Unless you consider this to be satisfactory as a stormwater management plan at this point.
It's a plan.
Oh, okay. That's clarification. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, we, we certainly at this point in the game want to know what their intentions are with stormwater.
Yeah, okay.
The depths and the lengths of the swales, the diameters of the pipes, the percolation lengths, all those elevations, those are things that need to be tweaked when, you know, the final elevations are drawn and the plan is put into place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yeah, and just to back that up, I mean, we've been on a particular project where we've gone back and forth over a couple ideas with their consultant. And we've held construction up three months on one project until we got that worked out and we could finalize that lease agreement on that. So, you know, your staff doesn't let people just go out there willing, you know, it's not like we'll go out there and start building this until we've gone through that formal final process. Because a lot of times, they're going to have their attorneys looking at these documents as well, you know, and to go, to bring them all into every step. documents as well, you know, and to go, to bring them all into every step that's required to do a final stormwater plan, you know, it, it takes a lot of heads, and you don't, you don't want your own attorneys going through all of that while, while the engineers are working out those final documents. And it has, I think, worked very well in the community. And this is the stormwater plan, is, and whether you can really see it in there or not, a lot of it's integrating, and the other engineers understand that as well, and, you know, it's.
All right, thank you.
A bizarre example is the, what's the development going up on the rock there?
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, so we have a stormwater ordinance, but they're building on top of rock, which is completely impervious. So how do you do stormwater on something that you're not really changing, you know, but we still made them go through that process, and it did, it did get hung up.
Yeah, we were with, threw a lot in.
We did not provide any zoning approval to the county for them to develop anything until we get the okay that the stormwater calculations and tables and schematics are adequate and satisfactory to our ordinance, which I do not administer. Lenny Bodenas, our Public Works Superintendent, does, and he uses a very qualified national engineering firm to approve those. Lenny does a good job.
Jason, is there any way that the county could take over the maintenance of this road?
It has to be built to a county spec in order for them to adopt or bring that on to their network. In this case, with the proposed plan, the road is not built to that. The right of ways are not adequate for that. So, you know, I understand your concerns about snow removal, and I'm not sliding it by any means, but where there's a will, there's a way. If all the people are working together to get rid of the snow, they will do that, but, you know, I guess snow storage is a component of our site plan review process. Snow maintenance or removal is not. So perhaps on the final plan, if you will, we'll need to demonstrate or show some areas where snow storage is capable as required by the final PUD. And maybe that area out towards the front of the road? Yeah. You can look in here, same thing like. We say that, you know, by ordinance, you're not supposed to plow snow into the buffer yard, but it happens all over, and there's no way to prevent that, really. It's just the nature of what people do, so. It's getting the snow, there's still.
Are you talking about, are you talking about removing the trees there so you can put?
Well, that's what we need to talk about, is, you know, what size are these buffer yards? Where can we provide additional locations on the site? You know, can we use a little bit of the basin here? So as we're looking at the buffer yards with the staff.
But, I mean, the area, the area you pointed, those would be site condo lots, so you'd have to have easements for those snow storage areas where?
We'd probably have to write something into that to do it, and that's what makes it complicated to do it. And when you're looking at snow remove, even to put it there, you're still talking loaders coming out, shifting where, taking a loader out, throwing it into the back of a truck and taking it somewhere off-site is probably more feasible than doing all of that.
More expensive, though, I would guess.
Exactly, well, it might be, yeah.
Might be.
Well, it's, it's, man hours are different, you know, in terms of, you know, if you think of a crew being in there all day, taking it and dumping, or a contractor may have a huge site where they come in with one loader, they're filling their trucks, they truck them off, they dump them on, on their site that they have available, and it's less man hours to do something like that. Mary, I know that you worked on Upfront Company, right?
Yeah.
They heated the sidewalk outside of there. Was that a pretty expensive endeavor? Or did they use the effluent of sanitary?
No, that was just strictly a boiler and, yeah, there's an operational cost to that, you know.
That would be one way to obviously solve that problem.
Yeah.
To just heat everything, which would be super innovative, but.
And who, and who would pay for that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Who would pay for that?
I'm just spitballing.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Well, I saw a really cool thing with mirrors that focus the sun on the sidewalks out front. It was, you know, they kinda follow and melt all the snow. It's in Colorado, so apparently it works, but it might be a little blinding, right?
Especially for kids with nowhere to go. So certainly, the planning commission's provided you with some to resolve and to continue to work on here if they so choose to move forward.
I have another question for Joe and Shannon. Given everything that you have done so far and everything you anticipate going through before the end of your option agreement with the township, do you anticipate that you'll, we have no authority whatsoever to rule on this, I'm just asking a question, do you anticipate you may need an extension on your option?
We do. We have forty-five, roughly forty-five days before that ends, and I think there's a lot of work that we need to do to make sure these requirements are met, so I believe we will be asking for an extension.
Thank you. I have one other question. So on a thousand square foot, two-bedroom or three-bedroom home, what's the cost per square foot? Two-hundred-and-fifty bucks a square foot? Is that what you're estimating it at?
Um, yeah.
About that?
At the very least.
What's a, what's a, what's a, what's a square footage cost to build now?
And I will tell you what, what we haven't done yet is price out all of the, I mean, just doing underground detention, you know, and Lou is, is a significant increase, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about strictly a home. I mean, it's three-hundred-and-fifty bucks a square foot to build, isn't it? How, how are we, how do you get a hundred bucks a square foot off the home?
These are the construction costs that they gave us last time.
They're modular.
Yeah, I know that, but they're, they're nowhere near that now. I would imagine.
They, they've also said that their, their selling point, price point on market is gonna be below what it costs them to build.
Okay, I'm, I'm really agreeing. How does that happen?
We will be seeking incentives, as we said, through MISTDA to fill the gap.
Okay, I mean, but who ends up, is that a taxpayer-paid thing then, and who pays for that?
So there's different financing sources that come in in order to subsidize these units. Some are grants that come in through MISTDA.
Okay.
The other program that we're seeking, we've already told the township that we're approaching, this is tax increment financing under the Housing Tiff Program, brand new. So there are different mechanisms that we're layering to get this to pencil, the way that it's penciling. There's traditional debt as well and equity, but there's also some sources that are designed for that.
Brownfield's not a possibility?
Pardon?
Brownfield's not a possibility?
So Housing Tiff is Brownfield, it's just, it's a new iteration of Act 381, and it is, we are approaching it. We've, we've discussed that at the township board meeting, that we intend to pursue it. This is a perfect Housing Tiff project. So our next step, we wanted to get through this meeting to see if there was any changes in density or any major changes to the programming, and our next step is to start really talking to the Brownfield Authority.
Do you do all three of those programs, Brownfield, Tiff, and MISTDA?
We can layer MISTDA grants, Brownfield, Tiff, which, Housing Tiff is Brownfield Tiff again. We could layer grants, you know, all different kinds of things. In, in some of our deals, we layer tax abatements, tax increment financing, and grants, and social equity. It just depends on the community and what's needed. Here, we have a primary construction loan that's coming through a local bank. We have a secondary loan that's coming from a CDFI, that's a regional CDFI. We have private equity, MISHDA, and the Housing Tiff money that's being bridged by a CDFI. So instead of waiting for that tax increment to come in, we are taking a loan at the very beginning that's gonna get paid back through that tax increment financing. But we still have approvals to get through in order to get that Brownfield plan approved, but that's how it'd be financed.
What that new program for Michigan, where the governor allocated millions of dollars to different communities to apply for grants for that?
My neighborhood. So we applied to my neighborhood, and they called us and said, we absolutely love this project, we would love to fund Marquette Township, the one thing you don't have is site plan approval. So they made us wait. So we, we're waiting for preliminary approval. I think we might be able to resubmit. We're gonna have to talk to MISTDA, but they really wanted to approve the project, they really like it.
So with the motion, what I think to do is to kinda list out the recommendations in there, or do we even need to do that since we're in the minute, minutes, or what do you think is the best way to do it?
If you want, I can make a draft motion, which would be to approve the preliminary PUD contingent upon the following items listed in the staff report. Item number one, a final stormwater management plan. B, the parking table, actually, they won't need B, B is good to go. And then B would be the buffer yard, addressing the buffer yard issue.
And snow management also.
I mean, you gotta show snow storage areas on the plan, but as far as telling a developer how to manage their snows, removal, I don't think it's in our ordinance.
Is that okay with your commissioners if Jason does the motion?
No, I cannot do the.
Well, we'll make the motion.
Well, right. Not, you just write it up, and then you can just repeat what you're writing up so that we can uh make sure it's all.
It's, it's not complicated. I mean, if you're comfortable with tonight, there's a motion in a second, you vote to approve, you're approving the preliminary PUD contingent upon the item.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the preliminary PUD, subject to the conditions that Jason mentioned, and in particular, that adequate buffer areas between land uses be implemented to the satisfaction of the planning commission.
One second.
Further discussion? All right, will you roll call vote? Is he taking it?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Cody?
Yes.
And Don Fizziel?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for all the helpful information.
Thank you. And just for the public's information, an approval with conditions shall not be considered final until the applicant submits acceptance of the conditions and all necessary revisions to the preliminary PUD plan to the planning commission. The final development plan approval time period, single phase with twelve months, within twelve months of the planning commission's approval of the preliminary PUD plan, I have a feeling it'll be sooner than that, the applicant shall submit an application to the zoning administrator for final PUD approval. If the applicant fails to submit, which is wrong. The final PUD time period, yeah, that gets approved by the township, well, the planning commission and the township board. I, I will follow up with you, but basically, you're at the final PUD process now.
So can you back up a second, though, Jason? So on these conditions, is approval done again by planning commission through a vote, or is it an administrative approval of the conditions?
That's a good question, and I had.
It's important for MISTDA because it, our deadline for MISTDA is October 1st. If we don't have, I, I think we would need to get through these steps by October 1st, and getting back in front of the planning commission may be an issue.
Yeah, I'll get to that. Planning commission review of final PUD.
Oh, no, the preliminary PUD. So it, when you said, when you mentioned the conditions on the preliminary PUD, and you stated the buffers, the buffer areas, you said that planning commission had to approve the conditions.
No, you know, you have to accept the conditions that the planning commission addressed tonight, saying that yes, rent of our development agrees to submit the final stormwater information and will adequately address the buffer yard issue or come up with something.
Final submission.
And that could be with the final PUD.
Okay, so we don't come back until, oh, until we submit final PUD.
But do you need?
But that could be, I mean, in my opinion, that could be turned around pretty quickly.
I, I think we can, I think we'll be okay with a condition.
We run two meetings a month, and the planning commission, let's see, it doesn't require another public hearing, so it's just a regular meeting. We meet second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. So you guys can get together tomorrow and hammer out stormwater details, hammer out what you think you can do with buffer yard, apply some areas of snow storage, and we can roll as quickly as you want.
Okay.
Does, doesn't have to work the board, the preliminary doesn't have to work the board?
Not the preliminary, no, the final.
And that was my question, does the preliminary have to come back? Thank you. I can articulate that very well, so, yeah.
But if the, if the planning commission approves the final PUD, the township board typically meets the next week.
Okay.
So we can keep her going.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye. All right. Six B Draft Compatible Renewable Energy Resource Discussion.
Yeah, so this is something that's come down the pike. Governor Whitner's energy legislation has required that communities take some action with regard to large-scale wind and solar energy systems. And so this is more for information at this point. This will likely be a board ordinance and will not be a part of our zoning ordinance, let's say, the way that I'm reading it anyway. But what it has to do with is solar energy facilities with a nameplate capacity of fifty megawatts or more, and wind energy facilities with a nameplate capacity of a hundred megawatts or more. And I know Denny's done a little bit of research on this too, and it, for me, it's pretty preliminary. And actually, Eric has been kind of our renewable energy guru, but I gave him the night off tonight, so read over the ordinance, it's in, it's in your packet as informational. I think at the next meeting, we could probably take some more.
Well, I mean, can't we just move this off our plate? I mean, the, the planning commissioners have had this model ordinance for at least three weeks before you just, four weeks before you just sent it. It's a model ordinance that's been developed by the Michigan Township Association. So if we adopt this ordinance, then if there is any developer that wants to build such a solar farm or wind farm, whatever, in our township, and I'm.
They're required to jump through an extra couple hoops.
They, they come with us. So here's, let me just say, here's, I would like to make a motion, and I won't make it until people think it's appropriate, but I would make a motion to rec, that the planning commission recommend to the township board adoption of the CREEO, the Comprehensive Renewable Energy Ordinance, as shown in the exhibit that you've attached, pending review and approval and completion by Attorney Zappa, at which time, the fully completed CREEO and the PC's planning commission's recommendation to the township board regarding it will be sent to the appropriate entities, whoever that is. If it's a township, if it's a county board, if it's not our ordinance, whatever. Because if we look at this, you see that Attorney Zappa's gonna have to look at this anyway.
Sure.
And it'll take him no time to fill in the blanks where it says insert this and insert that. Why, why should we waste our time on doing that?
That's perfectly fine. I was gonna wait till the next meeting to do this.
Let's do it.
If you wanna do it now, it's fine.
I mean, there's no point in waiting. This, we don't have anything to lose by adopting this. This is the Michigan township. You know, they were opposed to that legislation in the first place, but when it, you know, they realize they're not gonna be able to challenge it because the time passed and whatever, and this is the law for at least the next two years. Let's, let's move on it. Let's just get it off our plates. We've got so many other things to do. So anyway, I'll make a motion that the. So anyway, I'll make a motion that the planning commission, uh, recommend to the township board adoption of the Comprehensive Renewable Energy Ordinance, as shown in the agenda as an exhibit this evening, pending review, approval, and completion by Attorney Zappa, at which time, the fully completed Comprehensive Renewable Energy Ordinance and the PC's recommendation will be sent to the appropriate entities, whoever that may be, the county board, the township board.
Do you want to second that, just to-
I'll second that, caution.
Okay. Discussion on this, any comments, Steve or Bethany?
Yeah, I don't see a problem doing it that way.
I guess my question is, you say it's, it has to be done at the board level, so do we even need a motion for us to adopt this, or to recommend the adoption of it?
Oh, I think it's good to adopt it, because I'm not even sure the board's aware of it yet, I mean, it's fairly new information, as Denny knows and as I know, the MTA was kinda paused there for a minute, trying to figure out whether they could uncerp the language or wait till they had an opportunity to develop a, a boilerplate, so, as Attorney Zappa always does, um, he will make sure that the township's interests are met, regardless of whether this is a boilerplate ordinance for, you know, all townships in the community or just ours, and, and it'll just, it'll put a press on me to make sure that I get, 'cause I'll go through this then and add what I can add to it before even Attorney Zappa gets it, so it's less for him to do, and then put together, obviously, um, you know, some information for the board so that they're, you know, know about it, but, I, it's a, it's a good tactic take, and I'm, I'm fine with it.
Or does the board have the option of not adopting this?
They do, but I don't see why they wouldn't, yeah.
But it can't be more stringent than the state of Michigan's?
That's correct, um, what it does is it adds another layer of protection to the community, which is something that, uh, unfortunately, has been chipped away at over the years on different topics, but this one adds actually another layer of security to our community, um, when we have this in place, and that's what I'll explain to the board in a point in the future.
Will the state have to be okay in these bigger proj, bigger projects then also?
Will the state have to be okay with the bigger, um-
If, if something comes, does the state have to-
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, there's, with, with these large energy systems, there are both state and federal regulations that need to be met, as well as local.
Would it go to the state first before it came to the board, or, well, who would, who would, would it come to the planning commission?
A large-scale project? I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
It would come, it would come to the planning commission first, and if, but if we don't adopt this ordinance, they'll skip the planning commission and go right to the Michigan Public Service Commission.
If all this is adopted in the future, if someone wants to do a project-
Yeah, they'll have to come to the, to us first.
Before the state?
Right.
Yeah.
Otherwise, if you don't have this, it bypasses the local business.
At least we gotta say, you know?
Right. So, we have motion, support, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. No unfinished business?
Uh, just-
After plan update?
So, uh, uh, what I was told, Community Day went over very well, I was in a town that weekend, um, and SEH was present, and they did provide you with a summary of the comments that were taken at Community Day, and that's this page of information that I included for you. Secondly, uh, they included a press release that we'll probably put out Friday morning, and that'll kick off the community survey, and let the general public know that we're updating our master plan if they don't know that already, um, and we have a bunch of bookmarks we could hand out, and then we have a paper copy of the survey that we'll put out at various locations, um, for those that don't wanna use the computer, um, and then there's a, I was gonna do it under reports, but here's a graphic, they purchased some gift certificates, so, if you participate, uh, in the survey, you have a chance to win a gift certificate to one of the businesses listed there, um, so, yeah, there's the QR code, take your phone, scan it, goes right to the survey, you can do it that way, or you can follow a link online, so, we'll, we'll release that press release, um, on Friday morning, and you should see some activity with regard to, um, getting the word out there about both the master plan update itself and the community surveys, that's what I wanted to update you on.
I've got some questions, Jason, on this. Jim? Have the changes that we voted on at the last meeting to the survey been adopted and incorporated into the survey?
I believe they have, yes, I can send you the survey, uh, tomorrow morning.
We, thanks, would you, thank you. How lo- How long is the survey period?
I think we're gonna go through the middle of September.
Okay. And in addition to the press release, what other public media has been used to advertise this?
Well, uh, our website, uh, we're trying to get it on the back of the utility bill for next month.
On the calendar, the back of the calendar?
I'm gonna get that by the boss.
Well, she recommended it last time.
Yeah, so there you go, um, and then, uh, we'll put it on our Facebook page, and, yeah, I suspect the Mining Journal, TV Six, ABC, CBS will pick it up and-
Well, why don't you, you're a good spokesman, spokesperson, why don't you go get, contact Mike Settles, or, uh, what's his name, uh, the guy from Channel Six, you know, the guy I'm talking about, the news director at Channel Six, why don't you go on TV and do this, you're, you'd be good to, to publicize this.
Um, I guess if I get asked to be interviewed on it, I will, um-
I'm asking you.
Okay, maybe I'll send them your way.
No, you, you're the, you're the guy-
I appreciate that, yeah, I'll, I'll do what I can, um, we've had great turnouts on our surveys, so I'm not worried about my grill being out there to promote it, but, uh, if that's necessary, I'll do that.
Yeah, although, when you say great, great turnout, the, the, according to Lynn, the last survey of, regarding the master plan was, was papered and was sent out to all, all, all the taxpayers of Marquette Township.
Not all of them.
Well, who was it sent to?
It was a-
Garbage, everybody who pays the garbage bill?
It was just a random, I forget how many they did, but they didn't do everybody in the township, no.
Okay, what is the, what is the-
It's like six hundred or something.
Is, is there a, is there a, a percentage set by law that we-
Is it called relevance?
No, that we have to, we have to, in order to pass a master-
No, you don't have to do a community survey at all.
Oh, okay.
There's various ways to gain public input, we had a stakeholders meeting here last Friday that went very well, um, with about ten attendees, but, uh, still, a bunch of good conversation happened, and Marquette County Conservation District was here, um, Sheriff Zibert was here, um, myself and Eric and a couple others, so, yeah, it, I mean, it's not the only meeting we're gonna have, or the only way to gain input, but, um-
So the, the print that, uh, Lynn suggested, the printout on the back of the calendar, when, what, what garbage bill is that gonna be sent with?
With our calendar for next month, which would be the bill for September.
Yeah, but then, we're gonna end this in mid-September, so-
We'll go out on the first, so, they have a couple weeks to-
We could stretch it to the end of September, um, there's no, it was just a swag as far as how long we were gonna keep the survey open.
I just, you know, we got a lot more people in the township now, right, than we did in two thousand eighteen, so, trying to get it out to as many people as possible, I-
Absolutely, yeah, we're not trying to do this in a bubble, I mean-
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Is, uh, that a missed print, or am I missing something about updated equipment at Pitnik Rocks Park?
Yeah, I saw the woman write it on the board.
I just thought somebody copied what she, got.
Yeah, that's what, 'cause I pointed it out to her when I went up to give my comments, but I didn't tell her what it was.
This in the press release? Oh, no.
Oh, and, uh-
Yeah, I mean, people that went to Community Day, they might be from the city, too, you know, they might not just be from the township, so, it's our job, you know, this isn't printed anywhere other than for your information.
That's what I figured happened, but-
And we'll have to, you know, obviously, take the discerning factor in a lot of the comments.
I just thought maybe there was a hidden Pitnik Rocks Park somewhere that I, I didn't know about.
Uh, no.
Like the hidden beach?
Yeah, we can, uh, go through that and strike out the ones that aren't geographically relevant to us.
Okay, AB Draft Road Committee meeting minutes from June fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Just there for your information, yeah.
Okay. And we don't have Linda here for the township board report unless somebody else wanted to give us one?
I don't know what we did, that was a week ago, two weeks ago.
A few new firefighters, I believe.
Two, yeah.
Um, and there was a presentation by the library liaison, which basically amounts to they're still fixing the steps, um, I don't remember what else is on the agenda, but, I'm on-
I've been to so many live, live meetings, this is my third meeting today.
Yeah, and you're welcome to go on YouTube or, or check out the website as far as the uh, road committee just met, and, um, I don't know, what, what did you guys discuss? Anything good?
Nothing too exciting, no.
I know a lot of the road meetings that was scheduled for the year has been completed, so a lot of chip seal, uh, has been put down, if you haven't seen that, a little cat litter everywhere, um, so that's nice, um, Recreation Committee will meet next week, and they met, um, last month, and essentially, uh, we got a question on the survey for the rep committee, which was asking residents, what types of recreational amenities would you like to see that we don't currently have, and we put them down in a outdoor off-leash dog park, pickleball, disc golf, sledding, you know, some of the things that we've heard, and then we also included a line for other if they wanted to.
Getting all the water tow, we're getting all the water towers inspected.
From the road committee's perspective?
No, not from the road committee, but, so we did at the township meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We approved that-
Yeah, I actually flew a drone for Lenny, um, last, I think it was the week or week before, taking images of the, uh, the hatches on top of the water towers to show their condition, and they're all in good condition, I think, uh, Lenny's already been through that, and actually, came up with pretty flying colors, actually, on all that stuff, so.
With that chip seal, is it a lot harder to put the striping on there, looking for the lines and?
No, I just think they wait until all of it's kind of, like, they did it on Northwoods, and the first couple days, all you heard was like, stuff in your wheel wells, but now, it's all compact, and I suspect they'll come back around and put those striping back down, once everything's kinda compacted, there's that emulsion layer that goes down first, the black stuff, then they put the, obviously, the, uh, the aggregate on top, and, um, once it's all compacted down, they'll come around and do the striping again.
I got a question about four ninety-two, I've noticed an incredible amount of truck traffic on that road.
Yeah, so it'll be-
And who's hauling there?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Is, is Blondo hauling to Eagle Mine on that road?
I'm told that they're not doing Eagle Mine on that road.
Because they're hauling, they're, they're, they're double, they're double trucks on there.
I think-
And how are those trucks getting on four ninety-two? Are they coming on this road right here?
Yeah, they're coming on-
Is this road legal for that?
Yeah, it's a fettin, or it's a heavy hauler.
Because, I mean, that chip seal on there is already right down to the emulsion from those trucks, they have beat that chip seal black.
Yeah.
The emulsion's already starting to come up through there, so whatever, whatever the purpose of that was, is now in void right now, there's a tremendous amount of that traffic, and it's, if it's all limestone going to the cliffs, I'd be surprised, because there's a lot of traffic on that road.
Yeah, we, I mean, the trucks shake the building when they go by here, um-
How is that permitted on this road? Is that the classification for this road?
Yes, it is.
That was a mistake.
Well, there's one saving grace in this whole thing, and that was that the road commission indicated that they didn't wanna stop trucks at the Commerce, Forestville, Wright Street intersection, because they were worried about them getting up the hill, they've been making that left turn on the Commerce, Wright Street, going uphill since the middle of winter.
Yeah.
So, at least we have that in our pocket, um-
But like, again, like I said, that chip seal, that, that was, that was worthless on four ninety-two, with the amount of deterioration that's already gone on from that truck traffic on there, the emulsion is coming up through that chip seal, it's like it was never done.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing on Brickyard, too, I don't, it, it's, it's not, you know, it's not a new road by any means, it's meant to extend the life of the road at a lower price, and hopefully it does that, um, hopefully the emulsion is still in the cracks in where it was supposed to be to prevent the water seepage up, but, yeah, I mean, we share your concerns, uh, it's not the coolest to have these trucks, and they're dusty and they're dirty and they're, it's, yeah, it's, I don't know what we can do, I mean, it's really a road-
Are those limestone trucks the cliffs? Is that what those are?
I'm not exactly sure, they're both Van Dam, there's Oberstar, there's, there's a myriad of different-
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's remarkable how much is on there now, in fact, you can, you can tell right down here at the intersection where it hits, right by the, as across the, the, uh, the highway, that right there, that's just getting torn up by those trucks going around there, it's just nothing but rubber being laid down on there, they're making that corner so many times.
Yep, I've shared our concerns with the manager, I'm sure the manager has shared his concerns with the board, and I don't know where we go from here, but-
All right.
Yeah.
Still working on Forestville, I had a three-hour meeting last night, actually, with the Speaker of the House.
Oh, great.
I told him what needed to happen, and I asked him for ten million dollars.
That way.
So-
Certainly a bypass, or a quasi-bypass would alleviate the entire corridor, um, of truck traffic, should that happen in the future, so, again, master planning year, there's lots of ways to express our concerns in the plan, and then hopefully get those implemented in a policy, um, you know, following the adoption of this, keep that all in your mind, and appreciate your comments, Steve, on that, because I share your concern.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just too bad.
What they used to do was wrote half the trucks going on four ninety-two, and then half of them on forty-one, and gotten over on thirty-five.
Yeah, which makes sense, at least they're, you know, state, state highways or federal highways versus just a county road, yeah.
Coming from both ways.
Or else a street right here.
Well, when I was on the traffic committee for the city, they were taking Division Street then, and the people there were having fun about that, so, they had to change that road, nobody wants trucks anywhere, so.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know where to go with it.
It's too bad they can't use rail to get it out there.
You can get rid of that, iron ore heritage dome with the rail back.
Well, if that limestone is going to the mines, why can't it go on the same ore cars that carry it here? I don't get that, I mean, they're bringing ore to Marquette, to the ore dock, which is basically where they're getting the limestone from, why can't they just truck it back, or put it back on the ore cars and send it back?
I don't think they could load the ore cars there from the hopper, I mean, I don't know, like, they have a loader up there with the mines, or, yeah, you just stop it, then they send it in, so. Okay, where are we at? Planning zoning?
Uh, nothing more yet, just done.
Okay, any announcements? Any more public comment? Oh, 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 oh.
Registerant two six five Bishop Woods Road, uh, there is a disc golf, not a real big course, next to the pump track, the mountain biking pump track by Vandenboom School, so I don't know if you knew that or not, so.
I didn't.
Yeah, I did, it's kinda tucked in the woods there, but it's, it's, it's used quite a bit.
It's used quite a bit, yeah.
Night halls?
I think it's nine, yeah.
Um, any more public comment? Any more public comment? Additional comments by planning commissioners?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I went out to the Hall Sunflower Farms in south of Rock. Holy cow, is that beautiful out there. It's spectacular. I mean, if you get, it doesn't last long, but man alive, they got fifteen acres of sunflower. And they get a ton of sunflower seeds per acre, so that's what they do at the end of the year. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, but it was, it's stunning.
Probably harvest those.
Sunflower harvester? I don't know. And, and you can buy it too. We bought, we bought six beautiful heads for five bucks. I mean, they're this tall and they're still, yeah, no, it's, they got a nice little operation there.
That's Mr. Ferraro.
So I, I was glad to see that our consensus vote that we had at our last meeting to have a work session with Roger Zappa regarding the blight ordinance that was put in the minutes. But I'm, my inquiry now is, when do you anticipate we may have this work session on the blight issue with Mr. Zappa?
Well, it's gonna be up to him. I will say that I have been asking for this declaration for a grant that we had received years ago, of just finalizing the declaration so that we can get it recorded. And it took Roger about a month to get that done. So I know he's kinda backed up, but he, it is on his radar.
Okay.
And I'll poke him again and see, give him the dates of our meetings and see when he can attend.
Well, as Lynn mentioned last time, that it may be really difficult to have him scheduled for one of our meetings, but we would, the consensus was, we're willing to have a separate work session on a different day.
Okay.
So that'll give you more flexibility, 'cause we really wanna address this issue. There's so many, it's just, you know, I think having him here able to ask our questions, get the skinny on what's happening, you know, it would be very, very helpful to get this resolved. So.
No worries.
Thank you.
I would just like to comment on all the great questions, all you asked.
That's one other thing I'll, if I can still make a comment. I'm disappointed that there's no playgrounds for children in there. There's nowhere for kids to go in that area. Nowhere. Nowhere. I mean, and to have them go play in Schwemwood Park? Why? I mean, they could just go walk in the woods if they're going to Schwemwood Park. I mean, I, I, I think that's, that's sorely lacking with the number of children potentially that are gonna be living there with nothing for them to do and nowhere for them to go unless they cross the highway. I mean, I don't know where they'd go to play.
Yeah, they'll be walkable.
And, and, and her, her thing was, it was a cost factor.
Yeah.
Well, I think what they're trying to do is keep everything as low as possible.
I know, but if you got kids and you gotta live there, what, you wanna have something for your kids to do. I mean, that should probably be a sales factor if you ask me. Yeah, we got playgrounds for kids to play at or we got something for them to do versus hanging around the back of Starbucks. You know, I mean, I, I just, I just, I, I think that's, that's a, that's a mistake that there's nothing for children to do in that area other than riding their bikes on the streets in there. And there's gonna, you know, there's gonna be packs of them in there.
So how far does that lot extend towards the parking lot of Schwemwood Park?
Oh, it's, it's down here.
I know, but anyway, how much of that, that ravine area belongs to the township?
There is a drop off too.
But how, I mean, how much does the township own of that?
Up to the southern border of the development.
Up to the southern border. Okay, so even up the hill? Okay, so, I mean, if, if, if the township at some point in time wants to make a little, expand Schwemwood Park there a little bit, I mean, maybe that would be something we could think about. You know, I don't know. There is that.
Might be pretty costly with the terrain in there alone. That's kind of the issue. You're right.
We wanted to put bathrooms in there too at one point.
Too hard?
Yeah, to lay the land is pretty tough, on that side anyway.
Okay. You do your journey.